Welcome everyone to our Monday, February the ninth, to the council meeting. We're called to order and can we establish the quorum, please?
Trace Elder?
Here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Oh, here.
James DeVito?
Here.
Mickey Schneider?
Here.
And Terry McClain is absent with notice.
Please, the leades, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to approve this?
It's a move.
Second.
Have you got any additions?
We need to add the destruction of 2,000 records.
A second?
I'll second.
A second.
Destroy.
Okay.
I would like to, under new business number two, I would like to postpone that for now, take it off the agenda, which is the discussion of the franchises. And then I would like to add discussion on a proposed resolution against Senate Bill 202.
Is that like, what, number two or four or what?
It'll be number two under new business standard.
Oh, okay.
If it gets a second.
Second.
Oh.
Will you have any other additions?
I would like to add an ordinance regarding anti-discrimination. It's a separate conversation. A second.
Any other orders? All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, so you can probably say aye? Any opposed? Has everybody received copies of the minutes and had a chance to read them? Have a motion to approve?
It's a move. Second.
Any corrections, air additions? All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, so you can probably say aye? Okay. As far as committees go, we have Ken Fugate is re-nominated for the senate position. His position expires actually just Friday and we would like to continue on service. Miss Snyder?
I move that we go ahead and accept him right now.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
It's a move. At this time, I guess we'll have public comments.
With the elections last fall, Arkansas moved even more to the right. As that pertains to social issues, I see matters such as marriage equality and nondiscrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity falling further behind here. There is a bill pending in the legislature right now that will make that happen and just this afternoon, by a 24 to 8 vote, the bill passed, is now headed to the House. Sad to say, but most states, not just Arkansas, allow people to be discriminated against in employment, housing, and public accommodations based on their sexual orientation or gender identity. It's a fact and it's real and there are no ramifications. To put this in perspective, y'all know me, we've been here for over 23 years and I think have made a positive contribution to the community both economically and socially. But in most of the country and even here in Eureka Springs, Steve and I could go to a restaurant and be denied service just because we're gay. That can happen. We don't necessarily act gay, whatever that is, and we're of that age that current fashions may look great on models, but on us, not so much, so we don't even try. But nonetheless, we can be denied service and we would have no recourse. Fayetteville attempted to change that scenario, at least in terms of what happens within its own borders. A referendum overturned that ordinance. Many of the comments that were reported in opposition included religious belief is the reason, and you have no idea how much that scares me. Do you remember that just a few years ago, a few decades ago, it was perfectly legal to harass and discriminate against blacks based on religious belief? And do you remember further that much of what women have had to deal with in terms of lack of equal treatment with men was based on religious beliefs? It took a law to change, to begin the process of changing that. Decades later, the process is still going on, unfortunately, but at least there are repercussions to discriminatory conduct, but not so for gays and lesbians. There will be no change to the way LGBTs have been treated, are treated, and likely will continue to be treated unless there is a change to the law. I have read where some people are opposed because they believe no one is entitled to special rights, something they equal with this kind of legislation. Special. What is so special about just wanting to be served in a public accommodation or a restaurant whereby tax-funded governmental offices without fear of being refused because of my sexual orientation? And let me emphasize that, it's the fear of being refused because it can happen. Fayetteville tried to do something and came close, but for a very well-funded anti-campaign led by its own Chamber of Commerce and some well-known reality show performers. My hope is that Fayetteville will try again and soon. As we assemble here, Senator Bart Hester has a bill pending in Little Rock. It came about as a result of Fayetteville's attempt last fall. And while gay and lesbian is not mentioned in the bill, it does not take a rocket scientist to figure out that since Fayetteville's ordinance attempted to add protections against discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression, we wouldn't be having this discussion if Fayetteville only attempted to strengthen existing protections. If Senate Bill 202 is passed, it will prohibit Fayetteville and Eureka Springs and every other county and city in Arkansas from adopting its own nondiscrimination ordinance if it included protections not already present in state and federal law. In other words, and in simple unvarnished terms, it will be okay to continue to discriminate against the faggots and the dykes and the transvestites. They may be getting marriage equality, but they're not like us. As undesirable as this bill is, it goes further. It has an emergency clause. If and when it is passed, and I expect it to, it will only take the signature of the governor for it to go into effect. As a result, Senator Hester's bill could become law before the end of February, if not sooner. As marriage equality moves to nationwide coverage, bills like Senator Hester's will become even more frequent and insidious, and they can be cloaked however their sponsors want. But when you strip away the fancy words and look at what their actual impact is, it is clear that it is intended to make sure that people will not have to deal with gays and lesbians if they don't want to, even if they otherwise serve the general public as a government employee or private business. This is just plain wrong. I am as worthy as anyone in this room, this city, this state, or this nation. If someone wants to refuse to serve me iced tea in their living room, that is their prerogative, whether it's based on their religious beliefs or my table manners. But if they open a restaurant, a bakery, or work for the government handing out marriage licenses or driver's licenses or whatever else, it is unconscionable that anyone should be denied service or access because their sexual orientation, their gender identity, or gender expression. Making a statement in opposition to Senate Bill 202 and even perhaps hopefully adopting our own nondiscrimination ordinance would send a message loud and clear that within our borders, inclusion and equality is the norm and the standard, one that is backed up by the government. Time is of the essence. I ask you to please act tonight. Thank you.
Next is Natalie Mannering.
I live in Eureka. It has come to our attention that you will be reconsidering the ordinance for prohibiting traveling exotic wild animal performances. I am included in a group in Eureka who are very much in support of prohibiting traveling exotic wild animal shows such as circuses coming to Eureka Springs. It's no secret that circuses abuse animals in order to get them to perform unnatural tricks and starvation is very common practice. Wild animals do not stand on their hind legs, walk trunk to tail, or spin in circles naturally. They don't jump through flaming hoops by choice. Circuses perpetuate abuse in their training. In addition to these issues, I believe everyone is overlooking a very serious one, which is public safety. There are numerous incidents where circus animals have escaped, trampled, and killed people. There are also several incidents where animals have killed their trainers in front of children attending the circus. I saw pictures from one of the local papers of the last circus in Eureka Springs. The only thing separating elephants from children was caution tape. This does not seem to be adequate to keep large wild animals enclosed safely. Please support an ordinance prohibiting such dangers and abuses to come to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Trace Ellen Kelly?
I'm going to give everyone, with the Good Shepherd Humane Society, and I passed this out when I was for the last time, oh wait, I didn't have a chance to tell you. But there's a couple new guys on the block. I'm Trace Ellen Kelly. I live at 190 North Main and I'm a manager of the Doggy Thrift Stores for the Good Shepherd Humane Society. I've been working with and around shelter animals in various capacities for almost 10 years now. And over the last decade, I've seen dogs display what is usually known as kennel crazy or kennelitis, which is a condition commonly seen in dogs kept in cages or kennels for prolonged periods of time. Thankfully, most of our dogs are adopted out before this behavior has a chance to begin. But according to various sources, symptoms of this stress-induced canine compulsive behavior disorder can include spinning and jumping in the kennel, chewing incessantly and jumping. Other, more depression-like symptoms may include self-mutilation, lack of appetite, and lethargy. This is the exact same as the wild animals in circuses. They display stereotypic behaviors such as pacing, swaying, and head bobbing because they're in cages, very small enclosures, or chained for most of their lives. Experts agree they are literally attempting to cope with the boredom, the stress, and mental anguish this confinement forces them to endure. Typically, they're only let out to perform, which is only a few minutes a day, because an average animal's make only 14 to 18 minutes of a two-hour show. Banning only the bullhook or tasers or whips does not address the issue of the cruelty of constant confinement or the constant stress traveling in these conditions puts on them. These sentiments are not only coming from me, but for the entire Good Shepherd Humane Society Board. I would like to again share with you their unified statement urging council to pass an ordinance banning circuses with animals in Eureka Springs. And what they did was, dear mayor and city council, we, the Board of Good Shepherd Humane Society of Eureka Springs, would like to offer our support for passing an ordinance prohibiting animal circuses from coming to Eureka Springs. Abuse, neglect, confinement, and mistreatment of all of the wild animals in circuses is well documented and has no place in a town where we promote compassion toward animals and responsible pet ownership. Part of our mission statements and our beliefs is to promote humane treatment of all animals. Therefore, we support the efforts to keep the circus away from Eureka Springs. Please give your utmost consideration to the passage of such an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm sorry.
Zellany.
Natalie.
Thank you.
Okay. If you'd repeat your name again.
Rebecca Zellany and I live on Hayes Avenue in Eureka Springs. I'd like to thank you for considering once again an ordinance to prohibit traveling exotic animal performances. I sent you guys an email outlining my concerns about public safety and health issues. It's not uncommon for stressed animals to escape the circus. Circus personnel, spectators, and innocent bystanders have been injured or even killed in the past. I wanted to share a few instances when animals escaped the circus to demonstrate that this really does happen. In March of last year, outside of St. Louis, three elephants escaped into a parking lot moments before the circus was released and the parking lot was filled with patrons. They were loose for 30 minutes. In April 2013, Salina, Kansas, tiger escapes into the ladies restroom. November 2013, Glendale, California, a camel escapes into a busy street. February 2010, Atlanta, Georgia, a zebra escapes and runs through downtown Atlanta. November 2009, Enid, Oklahoma, an elephant escapes and is hit by an SUV. In March 2009, in Indianapolis, 15 children were injured when an elephant giving rides knocked down a stairway. The list goes on and on and on. I provided you all with pictures from last year's circus showing the use of yellow caution tape fencing to protect the public. I ask you if you feel comfortable with a barrier as minimal as this, I have some right here, keeping a 6,000-pound elephant contained. It actually reminded me of our Yellow City trash bags, and I believe these are actually stronger than the caution tape used to contain an elephant. Also of concern is that elephants carry the human form of TB. Circuses are required to keep records of animal testing completed on elephants and handlers. However, many times, they fail to keep these records up to date. USDA states any person who comes into contact with a TB-positive elephant is at risk for contracting the disease. The public really has no idea if an elephant is TB-positive or not. You may say the USDA will protect us, but I'm not too confident. There are less than 100 USDA inspectors to monitor 12,000 circus facilities. Some of you may be interested in strengthening our current codes to protect animals. I think this would be a good idea, but we must consider who is responsible for enforcing these codes. It only takes one time for someone to get hurt, for the city to get sued, or for it to be all over the news tarnishing our town's image. I'm required to have my dog licensed and on a leash, which is a lot stronger than caution tape, and to protect the public. And so I would ask you, how can you ensure that the public will be safe from an elephant behind caution tape? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jane Grenell?
I am here to ask y'all to, once again, the circus, to ban animal circuses from town. I don't like animal cruelty. I think it's done quite a bit, especially in the circuses. I understand there's two possibilities. You may be talking about banning circus animals altogether or doing an ordinance that says no prodding, no whips, no bad stuff for animals. I don't think that can be enforced, and especially in this town, I don't think it could be enforced. Therefore, I really would appreciate it if y'all would really consider banning circuses with animals from town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Melissa Green?
I want to talk about two things, and following Lamont is a big thing. What Lamont brought in about discrimination is part of why I'm here for the circus. This town is a sanctuary. I believe that we should not discriminate. I believe that cruelty to animals is not something that this town wants. I know that there's going to be some discussion, and what I want is that Eureka Springs says no to discrimination and says no to animal abuse. And circuses are notorious for it. And you've had people talk, and I'm not going to sit here and go into abuse because we know it. We're here. We know what abuse is. But I am going to say something. At our, when the circus was here, there were people that said, oh, there was no abuse. I know this is a grainy picture, but I want you to see. This came on my Facebook page the next day after the circus. This is the trainer, the elephant. This is the electric prod in his hand. Now, did he use it? I don't know. I wasn't there. But it was there to intimidate and scare those animals, and it has been used on them. So yes, there was abuse at this circus. And I want to see this table sit and talk about it, whether it's banning the instruments, that's a start, that's saying no. You know, the NFL has said no to abuse. Many states are saying no to discrimination. The list of people are states and countries that have said no to the circuses there. I want Eureka Springs to be that because our people come here because it's a sanctuary, because we can heal here, we're accepted here, there is no discrimination or abuse. I mean, look at our animal organizations. Look at our gay and lesbian organizations here. So I'm asking you humbly, please, take both of those, the discrimination that Lamont brought tonight seriously and the circus seriously. Thank you.
Rachel?
Rachel Bricks, One Magnetic. We realize in respect you have many pressing issues that need your attention. However, no one will argue that our economy is one of Eureka's biggest concerns and we must adapt in order to keep people coming here. Prohibiting circuses with animals is good for our town's image and our image is part of what we sell. Overall, people are increasingly interested in animals and concerned about animal welfare. More than 30 million people each year travel with their pets, and many Eureka businesses already know this, and they've adapted and become pet-friendly. In 2001, people spent $28.5 million on their pets and their care. By 2013, that number doubled to $55.7 million despite a nationwide recession. Our culture has become saturated with award-winning books, movies, and documentaries about pets and animals, and animal-related videos are commonplace on the internet and social media. Within the last few years, many states have increased and even doubled fines and sentencing requirements for animal abusers, and as of last year, when South Dakota finally got on board, all 50 states now have felony provisions for animal cruelty. Nearly 10 bills are currently in Congress aimed at protecting animals from inhumane treatment, including the Traveling Exotic Animal Protection Act, which would look at discontinuing circuses with animals altogether. And as of last month, I would highlight that the FBI has reclassified animal abuse for the first time in its history as a crime against society based on research of the correlation between animal abuse and domestic violence. This is the same designation given to murder, arson, and drug trafficking. In 2009, just 1% of the US population reported eating vegetarian. In just six years, that number has quintupled to 5%. That's 16 million Americans choosing not to eat animals. And in recent years, consumers are increasingly demanding cage-free, certified humane, cruelty-free products. I tell you these facts because they represent how people are spending their money, they represent how people are spending their time, they represent how people are eating and how they're voting. All extremely important information for a town aimed at bringing in more tourism and making more money. The circus did not and does not contribute to our local economy, nor does it improve our image. In fact, it violates both our city's codes and Arkansas State laws of confinement, cruelty, and abuse. Prohibiting circuses with animals does, however, catapult us into the forefront of the current trends in animal welfare, thus enriching our town's image and allowing us to make good on our reputation as a forward-thinking, animal-loving town. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments. First, unfinished business is Dwayne's recommendation for yard waste.
I should to discuss.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I met with one last week. He has to make one more contact with one of our state lines in charge of this kind of thing because we have to get special permission. So he is working on that right now, on that final step, and we'll be getting back together with the mayor and I. That's it.
All right. Any further comment? All right. Second item is an update on the repair of the parking lot by the auditorium. Can I have a motion to?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. I had, was quite busy last week on this issue, and had some good news. I met with the quorum court, Sam Barr, met with the finance committee. They agreed to go ahead and work with the city of Eureka Springs to help fix the problem. So we're going to go through with a combination of city of Eureka Springs and the county in going ahead and doing a forced account and getting this repaired. County Judge Sam Barr actually was all ready to start, so I met with him on Thursday, he was ready to start on Friday tearing up the parking lot. So they are ready and willing to get this thing underway, which I was real excited about. Right now, they did meet with Dwayne Allen and his road foreman, and we finished up with some engineering drawings that we're going to submit over to the county. I told him we'd take care of the engineering work, and we have those done and received those today. So we're going to be submitting that over to the county, and hopefully within the next week or so, we'll be able to start work on repairing the parking lot without a great deal of expense to the city. Yes, Mickey?
Were they at all amenable to them doing the money and we doing whatever labor we could?
Absolutely, yeah. We're working with the labor portion and, of course, one, somebody had to, ultimately they decided that they were responsible for it, and so because of that, then they're going to take the lead in the project. But I said that we would work with them in providing whatever we needed to provide as far as labor or material. And so we're going to be working together on that and hopefully get it done for a lot less than what our final estimate, and I'm not sure if I shared with y'all or not, the final estimate that we got from Dwayne was 136,000.
You didn't share it. That's much lower than what I was.
It was lower, but we're hoping to get it in even less than that now because we will be going in by forced account, which basically means it's an emergency situation, and because of that, we won't be putting it out for bids, we'll be using it, doing in-house. David?
That answered my question.
Okay. James?
Did I read somewhere that there was some monies available for this?
Well, and we're actually meeting with some people from the state and seeing about getting some extra money. getting some extra money, because this is just really, as y'all know, it's just the head, the head of the whole problem. You know, we can go downstream, and we've got another issue that is all of our concern. I mean, and it's all of our jurisdiction, and that's the intersection of East Mountain and Flint Street and Water Street, where all those come together right past the Grand Central. There's another serious condition of the tunnel right in that area, and that's going to have to be dug up also. So hopefully, we'll be able to get some of the federal money and state money to be able to help us with that aspect of it.
Wasn't there, the prior mayor at one point told us about the Mill Hollow Bridge was going to get ready to go to? Did that ever get fixed, or is that potentially on the list?
I don't know on that. Yeah. And actually, and probably because of flooding, if that's what he was referring to.
It was, because it was, looking underneath, it was very questionable it would survive.
Yeah, because that's where the water floods. All the watershed comes out down Mill Hollow, that creek right in through there, and I have seen it literally right at that point about, right there, probably about a foot deep, and then as it goes on downstream toward, like Dee Perky Pile's house is, that's built three feet above the floodplain, and it came up a couple of feet up on his, in his yard, on down toward the depot. So yeah, it could be a very serious condition, but those are surface conditions that we can take care of. Nothing, anything else? Great. Update on the new hospital, motion to discuss?
So move.
I really don't have much to report on that. We are just now in the first week of February, and I think we're looking at about six weeks for the hospital and their architect to be able to get together on their estimates. So we're probably, maybe by the time our next council meeting, I may have something more to report where we are on it. New business, which is readdressing the circus animal ordinance.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. James, you want to lead off?
Yeah, question for the city attorney. Since we're a new council and a new year, are we still bound by the restriction of reintroducing the same ordinance?
It's my understanding that at this point, the council could consider the same ordinance as it considered, or as the previous council considered, because it is a new term. Or it could consider a tweaked ordinance if it would prefer, thinks that it has a better chance of meeting the council's desires.
James?
Just for discussion, I would make a motion to resubmit at our next council meeting the circus animal ordinance for consideration.
Have a second.
I have a question.
I have a motion on the floor if it fails.
There's a motion on the floor. All right, the motion failed. Any discussion, Joyce?
Yeah, I have an ordinance here. Is this the same as the one you wanted us to consider, the one that we have here? The one without a number? You have a copy of this?
The one from last year?
No, well, this is, no, this is the, no, this is the one, I don't know, I had this in my portfolio. It doesn't have a number.
That's probably the one.
It's called the Ordinance Amending Title VI of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to Prohibit.
Last year.
Oh, is this the last year's ordinance?
Which James is talking about.
But it's, oh, it, well, this, this is the ordinance I like, but I think we should pass, and I didn't know this is the one you were talking about, because it doesn't have a number.
Well, go ahead and make a motion, Joyce.
Okay, I, I make a motion that we give this ordinance a number and read it for, put it on the first reading for approval.
Second.
Can I say something?
Yes.
The one we had last year, was it last year?
Yes.
2219, did not have "and" or performances in the title. The one that was sent by Ms. Briggs with the changes, let's see, the third line I have collapsible, that doesn't appear to be either one.
All right, let me, let me state, let me say this.
This is the ordinance I wanted us to consider.
This, this ordinance that was in your folders has things underlined and marked out, and I'm assuming that's a new ordinance that Mr. Weaver did not.
I don't have that, I don't have the one that you have this marked on.
Has not sent.
Just a minute. Yeah, sure.
Mr. Weaver.
It might be the same ordinance.
I have briefly.
No, this is the third, this is the third thing.
But you didn't prepare this.
This is why?
Okay.
That one is neither the one that was considered last year, nor the one that was sent by Ms. Briggs with the line out with gray.
Okay, well, this is the one that I wanted us to consider, because I read it, and it takes care of the whole problem. So where are we at with this? I had it in my packet. It was laying on my desk, so I assume I either got an email of it, or it was in my box or something.
Well, it should have been in your package, and I lost track here. Did we have a motion?
No, we don't have a motion.
No, I don't know where we're at. I, I made a motion to reconsider, to consider this ordinance, to give it a number and to put it on its first reading, but nobody else has a copy.
A second, yeah.
Yeah.
There is a motion, in a second.
I didn't think it was after the second.
Now, okay, discussion.
Well, if no one has a copy of it, where do we?
Well, we can still have a discussion.
Oh, all right, well.
But we don't know what it says.
Okay, can I, can I?
Well, wait, listen, David, you had a comment.
I did. I remember distinctly this discussion and everything that went on, and I've given this a great deal of thought, and I want to start by saying very clearly that I am 101% behind curbing animal abuse within the city limits, which is the jurisdiction of this council. I empathize with circuses moving animals and traveling shows and all other types of movement of animals across the country in confined spaces and all that goes on with it, but that's not our jurisdiction. And if, listening to what Ms. Briggs said just a moment ago, it looks like there is a tremendous movement by the FBI in dealing with this issue at a much higher level. So to me, for this council sitting here, looking at the issue at this table and our jurisdiction of the city, I am having a problem banning an entity from being able to come into the city when the real issue is the abuse of animals. It seems more prudent to do something similar to what happened with the noise ordinance, and that's when the citizens identified a concern, they got together, they asked council for a rep, which they felt they needed, they assembled a small group, they looked at the noise issue, they developed an ordinance in a very timely manner, and they came back, and it was passed. It seems that it would be prudent to maybe take the Dog Park Committee or some verification. There's obviously plenty of people out here that I'm sure in a small group would set on some type of a committee that would look at the issue of animal abuse, look at our current ordinance. I know there's a person sitting in this room that has recently met with the animal control officer and the police chief about the issues of animals in the city, concerns about what's been going on, and received a very favorable opportunity to visit with them about some concerns. But to just take off and ban the circus or a traveling show, where does that stop? What are we going to ban next? It's not sitting well with me, and so I'm having a very difficult time, and I really think we should consider very carefully doing our very best to ban any type of animal abuse up to and supporting the federal legislation and state legislation that occurs within these city limits, whether the animal was coming through in somebody's car, it's the middle of summer, they get out and eat, and they leave the dog locked up. That's animal abuse, and we ought to be able to deal with it in the city because it's in our, on our jurisdiction. So I think there's a lot of potential there to look at this besides just fragmenting towards a circus or something, and that's my point.
James?
Well, dozens of states in the United States and hundreds of cities in the United States and multiple countries worldwide have banned circuses for the very reasons that have been mentioned by the people here in this community, and that is that confinement in small cages, transported over long distances, forced to perform unnatural acts. Those are the hallmarks of the circus, and this ordinance was specific in that it identified traveling exotic animal circuses, not Circa Salay, which is just people. But you cannot deny the fact that confining large wild animals and trucking them all over the country and forcing them to perform unnatural acts is not abuse. So it's the hallmark of a dying breed in the world, which is this type of circus. So I personally don't see an issue with banning that, that specific entity. I don't agree with your statement, what's next? Well, what's next would be addressed when that situation came forward. You could say that about any law we pass. What's next? What will we make illegal next? I can say that about every action we take at the council. So I question, you know, the unknown. What we do know is what occurs at these traveling circuses, and it's unfair to the animals. We are known as a city for compassion to animals. We have Turpentine Creek, we have the Go East Young Dog, or Go East Young Dog?
That's it, yeah.
You know, this is the hallmark of who we are as a city, the compassion for animals. We go to great lengths to care for abused and mistreated animals that are brought to our city from many places around the country, and I'm proud of who we are as a community, that that's a part of our nature, that we speak for those that don't have a voice. And, you know, this was a good ordinance we crafted last year. We fell one book short of passage. I understand your vote at the end was a parliamentary maneuver to bring it to the table, but unfortunately, that was not to be the case. So I'm not sure what has changed, but we are still a compassionate community that speaks for those, the least among us are the animals, and it is no secret that there is abuse rampant in circuses, and they have no business in our type of community.
Ms. Stewart?
I, okay, I apologize to you, James, because what I had in my hand was the ordinance that you brought up first, but it was the final draft, and it's the same as the one the city clerk has. So had I realized that I, that you were talking about the same thing, I would have seconded your motion. Nevertheless, we do have a motion for this, and this, what David was talking about could be taken with a local complaint. Those are local things that happen, somebody leaves a dog in the car, somebody's abusing their dog, we have that. We have that covered in our animal abuse ordinance, but what this does, and it takes care of it very neatly, because it prohibits exactly what James says, traveling, no individual partnership or corporation can perform here with animals that have, well, I, we're going to read it, because I have a motion on the floor to read it, but this does what James says, and this takes care of circus, circuses, it doesn't mention circus. So I don't see any way that we can be sued, any way it gets us into any kind of trouble. It covers exactly what we want to do here, it covers what the people of Eureka Springs want, and by not trying to get into, you're not allowed to use bull hooks, you're not allowed to use whips, you're not allowed to use tasers. If you get into that kind of thing, then you have to appoint an inspector, and you have to have fines, and you have to have arrests. This just simply takes care of the problem by saying you can't have wild animal acts performing within the city limits of Eureka Springs, and our reason for it is, is because the only way you could train a wild animal is with pain and pain avoidance, avoidance and fear, and we are not in favor of that, therefore, we are not going to give these people a venue, and we're not going to pay money to see the results of their training. But this ordinance-